Y'all making us sit up front tonight?
It's seven.
Hey, good evening. I'm glad everybody made it out on this nice, cool, this is good weather for farmers into Mr. Jones. Look, we welcome everybody. So I am calling the Board of Supervisors in order. Mr. Perry, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the Planning Commission to order.
All right. With that said, Mr. Perry, would you do the invocation, please?
Yes. Let us pray. Father God in heaven, once again, Lord, we come in the name of Jesus. We come, God, this evening, giving your name all praise. Thanking you, God, for all your many wonderful blessings. Thanking you, God, for washing over us last night, sending your angel to stand watch. You didn't allow any hurt, harm, or danger to come our way. We thank you for that, Lord. And now, God, we ask that you would come and be one in our midst. Bless each and every one that have come out this evening to the joint Planning Commission and Supervisors meeting, Lord. We pray that you would come there and just be one in our midst. God, we ask that you remember the sickening shut-in. Even two of our members on the Planning Commission prepare a special blessing for them, Lord. Pray that you would touch them as only you can touch. For us, in the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
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 All right, we honor God. Let's go on our country. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I would like to go ahead and get approval of the agenda or any amendments to the agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I hear a motion to approve. Can I?
Second.
I understand a second. I heard a second. Any further discussions? Not hearing none right now. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, let's have it. Well, following the agenda, and I will ask Mr. Perry to also speak if he needs to before we get into presentation. I do want to, because we want to make sure we concentrate on this, getting this comprehensive plan right. And I want to tell the citizens that we started this April 19th, 2021, the Working Committee. I give kudos to the Working Committee and the Planning Commission. They put a lot of time and effort in this comprehensive plan, and it's over 120-some pages around that neighborhood, maybe 122. And we're very thankful that they worked hard and came up with this draft for us to approve. So tonight, we want to listen what you've got to say about the comprehensive plan and hear your points. I want to also give a special thanks to Todd Fortune, the Deputy Director of CRC. He led us herd of cats around and got us together, and it wasn't easy. And he sent out those surveys, and the surveys came back, and we had to take that into consideration. Also want to thank Mr. Zodi for helping us as well, and of course, Mr. Kostin, keeping us focused on our mission. You know, this is very unusual. We're having a joint public hearing. And so some people said, well, how long you gonna give me? Give me five minutes, six minutes? Well, technically, if you want to say it that way, you could give, if we had a different meeting, you could give the Planning Commission five minutes, and then when you come to a Board of Supervisors, you get five minutes. So y'all correct me wrong, my math is wrong, five plus five is 10. We're not going to look at the clock tonight, but I do want you to get to the point, if you could, and let's move on, and tell us the things that you think that need to be changed. I don't want to leave here tonight. Look, we'd have started this thing in 2021, and I don't want anybody to come to me and say, well, Steve, if you would have gave me two more minutes, you would have understood my point. We're not doing that. Get to your point if you could, so we can listen to you. And I've been criticized on not making eye contact, but sometimes what I'm doing, I'm trying to write notes down, so I apologize for that. So keep that in mind as we go through this process. Anything you want to add, Mr. Perry?
No, you said it.
Anything the Board members of Planning Commission like to say?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I want to add is, like you said, we came here to listen tonight, take some notes, and so we can make the most informed decision moving forward. And the only thing I'd really like to add is to remember that the citizens of Nottoway County are not the only ones watching us tonight. Whether it's tomorrow or a year from now, there very well could be investors to bring economic development here to Nottoway County. So the way we conduct ourselves, and yes, this is me saying this, the way we conduct ourselves may go a long way. You can say no, but it's how you say no, and you can say yes, and it's how you say yes. We just want to be sure that anybody that wants to do work with Nottoway, business with Nottoway in the future, knows that we are approachable. And if you want to have a conversation, come have a conversation. So let's remember, we're not the only ones in this room that will see and hear this tonight.
Good point. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
On the Planning Commission, I just wanted everybody to know that this is just a public hearing. The Planning Commission will not be making any recommendations or voting on any issue tonight. This is only a public hearing.
Great point. That way, once we hit a public, if it's something we agree with to change, amend something on that comprehensive plan, then we have that time to do that. So thank you for saying that, Mr. Perry. All right. With that said, Mr. Zodi, you have the floor, sir. Mr. Zodi is our Planning and Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Chair, and everyone can hear me in hope. I want to welcome the public and the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. I want to get close to y'all, but I don't know about this. I want to go over a few things real quick regarding the comprehensive plan and the purpose of the comprehensive plan. I'm citing State Code Section 15.2-2223, and that states that a comprehensive plan be prepared and recommended by the Planning Commission, thank you, for the physical development of the territory within its jurisdiction. The Commission shall make careful and comprehensive surveys and studies of the existing conditions and trends of growth and of the probable future requirements of its territory and inhabitants. The comprehensive plan shall be made with the purpose of guiding and accomplishing a coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the territory, which will, in accordance with present and probable future needs and resources, best promote the health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare of the inhabitants, including the elderly and persons with disabilities. The comprehensive plan shall be general in nature in that it shall designate the general or approximate location, character, and extent of each feature, including any road improvement and any transportation improvement shown on the plan, and shall indicate where existing lands or facilities are proposed to be extended, widened, removed, relocated, vacated, narrowed, abandoned, or changed in use, as the case may be. As part of the comprehensive plan, each locality shall develop a transportation plan that designates a system of transportation infrastructure needs and recommendations that include the designation of new and expanded transportation. The comprehensive plan with the accompanying maps, and we'll be posting the map up after I do my speech, Platts, charts, and descriptive matter show the locality's long-range recommendations for the general development of the territory covered by the plan. The designation of areas for various types of public and private development and use, such as different kinds of residential, including age-restricted housing, business, industrial, agricultural, mineral resources, conservation, active and passive recreation, public service, flood and drainage, and other areas. The designation of historical areas and areas for urban development or other treatment. The designation of areas for the implementation of reasonable measures to provide for the continued availability, quality, and sustainability of groundwater and surface water. The comprehensive plan shall consider strategies to provide broadband infrastructure that is sufficient to meet the current and future needs of residents and businesses in the locality. To this end, local planning commissions shall or may consult with and receive technical assistance from the Center for Innovative Technology, among other resources. The location of military bases, military installations, and military airports, and their adjacent safety areas. And lastly, the comprehensive plan guides capital improvements program, a subdivision ordinance, a zoning ordinance, and zoning district maps, mineral resource district maps, and agricultural and forestal district maps where applicable. Okay. Having said that, as Chair Bowen mentioned, the process started in 2021 with the formation of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and ably assisted by the CRC's Deputy Director, Todd Fortune. For me, I joined the county in February 2022, and I do want to thank Todd for all his hard work. He's been a pleasure to work with, as well as CPC. It's a very, very good group, and they're very focused on our mission. The current comprehensive plan was last updated in 2006. Okay, but here's an issue, is that the State Code 15.2-2230 requires the comprehensive plan to be reviewed every five years and to advise whether it's advisable to amend the plan. So tonight's meeting, as Chair Perry and Chair Bowen both said, is a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear the concerns of the public. Upon closing the public hearing, staff will create a comment report based on public comment and respond to each comment with either accept and change the comprehensive plan language, reject, or no comment. This report will be shared with the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors at their respective February meetings. And having said all that, I will now turn this over to Todd Fortune.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mrs. Zodi.
Good evening, and thank you for those kind words, Greg. And I would like to echo Greg's sentiments. The Working Committee was very good to work with during this process. And you have to bear with me, two things you should be warned about. One is I tend to speak kind of fast, even though I'm from the South, I speak fast. So please let me know if I need to slow down. And I actually am recovering a little bit. I tested positive for strep last week, so hopefully my voice will hold out through the whole thing. Just a few quick comments. I don't want to take too much time, but you'll notice, for those of you, and I'm sure many of you in the room have seen this draft plan, it looks a bit different from the 2006 plan. We basically started from scratch on this. We tried to incorporate as much from the old plan as possible, to the extent practical, in drafting this new plan. But this is basically a brand-new plan, and I'm not going to read this word for word. Like Mr. Bowen said, it is well over 100 pages long, just the plan, 122. That was correct. Just to give you a brief overview of what we're doing, Section 1 is your introduction, very short, just talking about why the plan is being done. Greg touched on the sections of Code of Virginia that govern the plan. And we also talked about the process. The information in here might be subject to a little bit of tweaking, but I think it's more or less up to date as far as the process for creating a new plan for the county. Section 2 is your community profile. We talk about where Nottoway County is located within Virginia. We talk about the history. And just so you know, for those of you who are not aware, the part that talks about the history, I pulled that from various sources, the county website, Virginia Department of Historic Resources, and some other sites, to come up with just a very brief history of the county. I didn't want to touch too much on that. The maps that are in here, Maps 1 and 2 especially, the Code of Virginia where it talks about comp plans, one of the requirements is to have a general map of the county, so we have those in there for reference. Excuse me. A lot of what else you're going to see in Section 2 is tables and charts, the various sources, the U.S. Census, the U.S. Census American Community Survey, the Virginia Department of Health, the Weldon Cooper Center at University of Virginia, Department of Education, Virginia Department of Education, that is, Virginia Employment Commission, and so forth. So there's a lot of data in there, and the data basically is meant to paint a picture of what Nottoway County looks like and how it got here. And there is also a table in there for population projections from the Weldon Cooper Center to show where they project the county is headed. Section 3 starts off with more data, basically talking about housing. And there is a requirement to address affordable housing in the plan. We talk about housing here, and we also talk about it later on in your goals, objectives, and strategies. That you'll notice, for those of you that have looked at Section 3, you'll notice there is a lot of transportation data in here. That goes to the requirements that we have a transportation element and discuss transportation in the plan. And for this, we actually compiled this, and then we sent it to V. Richmond District, which covers Nottoway County, and asked them to review it and give their blessing on it. So everything that you see in here as far as transportation has been reviewed by V. and they've given their okay on it. Getting it to the end of Section 3, we talk about community facilities, and Greg mentioned military bases. We do talk about the facility currently known as Fort Pickett. I understand that's in the process of a name change. We also talk about state facilities, and then we also touch on other assets the county has, industrial sites, museums. We talk about the water and sewer service as far as the towns. We don't talk too much about the towns in this plan because it's a county plan. The towns have their own plan, but we do talk about water and sewer service to some degree, and other stuff as far as the county, waste sites, law enforcement, fire rescue. We talk about electric service in the county, Mid-Atlantic broadband and what they have in the county. We talk about the plantation pipeline. I understand that the name of that pipeline may have changed. We talk about recreation facilities, historical sites, and then we get into climate data, geological data, so forth. It's a lot of information. It's a lot of data that goes into the plan, but again, it's to show what Nottoway County has and so forth. Really, the meat of your plan is going to be Sections 4, 5, and 6. Section 4 is your land use, and the land use section includes a smaller version of the map that Greg and Ted are putting up now. But in the land use, we talk about the current zoning, just to give an idea of what the county has now. And then we have the current zoning map that's from the 2006 plan. And then what we did for our future land use map was we took the current zoning and we just kind of tweaked, as the Working Committee saw fit, to come up with a, really, it's a general future land use map. But what will happen is when the plan is adopted, the county will be using the plan, and especially the land use section, as a guide for any future zoning decisions. And just to reiterate to the group, your comp plan is a guide. Your tools are your ordinances. So you'll basically be using a comp plan as a guide to amend your ordinances going forward. Section 5 is really a new section. We call it special policy areas. Section 6 is your goals, objectives, and strategies. And really, the big difference between the two sections, your special policy areas, we pulled a few basically policy areas that we felt needed some additional discussion, and they're discussed a little more in depth. And those policy areas, of course, loss of agricultural, open space, protection of water resources, revisions to your zoning and subdivision ordinances, developing the U.S. 460 corridor in particular, affordable housing. And then we do touch on renewable energy, cell towers, and in broadband, the fast sea facility at Fort Pickett, and military installations, and state facilities, and economic development. And those are all addressed in really a more depth, whereas your goals, objectives, and your strategies, those are just, your goals are really, well, really, all three of those, goals, objectives, and strategies, are really just brief statements about what the county would like to try and achieve. Goals are a longer range, 10 to 20 years in scope, kind of give you a long-range goal for what you want to do. Objectives are five to 10 years, and then strategies are shorter term. And I'm not going to go through these, again, read it word for word. We'd be here all night. But I did include, what I did was I took from the county's previous comp plan, as I took the county's vision statement, and I wordsmithed it a little bit and tweaked it a little bit to kind of include a revised vision statement, which you will see on page 104 in Section 6. And then when you get to Section 7, that's just a brief implementation plan. Those are some things that the county can do, once the plan has been adopted, to implement the plan and to also use the plan in amending your ordinances and really planning for the future going forward. So that's a real thumbnail sketch of the process. As Mr. Bowen said, we started in April 2021. The joint public hearings are, you are aware, they're required as part of the process. Having a joint public hearing basically takes a step out, but we're having one public hearing instead of two, but it still meets the requirement. And then again, the future land use map you see up there for everyone's benefit, basically a bigger version of what's in Section 4. Those are really the comments I have. I will take any questions the group has.
Any questions? This is especially for the Board and the Planning Commission. Just for, I guess, transparency, Board members, this is the first time you laid eyes on the comprehensive plan? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? All right. And what I'm hoping to do too, Todd, is that possibility, after we let, go through the public hearing, we close it. If you don't mind, if you stay a little while, because the public might have some questions. They come to them because they get to listening to the situation. Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. With that said, looking at the agenda and following it, this has been approved. We're ready to open the public hearing. Does the public hearing, does anything have to be introduced any more custom than what we've done already? Okay. So I'm going to yield, before I, I'm going to open the public hearing for the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Perry, you got the floor to open up.
Okay. I will open the public hearing up to the Planning Commission. And like I already stated, this is a joint public hearing. We will not be entertaining any, well, we will not, the Planning Commission will not be making any recommendations to the supervisors or voting on any issues tonight. This is basically, we want to hear from you all.
Right. Do we need a motion to go into public hearing?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to open a public hearing for the Board of Supervisors.
Could you amend that to say joint for both?
Yes, sir. I moved to open the floor to the public hearing for the joint meeting between the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission.
I hear a motion. I got a second from Ms. Simmons. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. All right. Public hearing is now officially open. The first one on the list is Mr. Hamilton. He didn't put an address on here, but I understand he does live in Chesterfield, but has some land. And that last name, Hamilton, sounds very familiar, like over in that Lewis, probably Lewis, Lewis.
Lewis and Plank.
Lewis and Plank Road. I call it 723. But anyway. And before you get started, Mr. Hamilton, you said you wanted to introduce a close friend of yours tonight, and you can do that if you would like to.
Okay. Well, I was going to do it at the end, but I'll do it right now. This gentleman, far as I'm concerned, is the best state forester we've ever had. And I know of in Nottoway County, the best state forester we've ever had in the state of Virginia. He's the best state forester we ever had in the United States. And if he's the best forester we ever had in the United States, he's the best forester we ever had in the world. Mr. Dick Starnes over here.
It is good seeing you, Mr. Starnes. I thought you were talking about Kirby over here.
Kirby got started a little later.
All right. You have the floor, sir.
Okay. I thank you for this opportunity. If I'd have known that I was going to have 10 minutes, I would have added a few things in the statement.
Don't start that.
But I cut it down, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I haven't read this comprehensive plan. I didn't realize it was on internet, but I hope you'll bear with me. I'll put my feelings to you. I am very concerned about the proposed solar panel site labeled the Dixon Creek Project. It is my understanding that tonight's meeting is focusing on the Nottoway County comprehensive plan. I can give you all some copies here. In my wildest dreams that I've ever, think I would ever be before the Board of Supervisors, by the way. I believe you should limit solar panel sites to small acre sites with not impact the viability of agriculture and forestry. Homeowners and businesses shall be allowed to utilize solar facilities as an alternative source of energy. In your guidelines for solar energy, please develop and delineate strict guidelines to protect the property rights of landowners, homeowners, and businesses. I want to explain why the information meets needs to be incorporated into our comprehensive plan. I own a joint in land, and land also opposite the site of Old School House Road, just a small little dirt road that goes between the properties. And I've had it for 68 years. You might not want to believe that, but my father died when I was 16. And then he left this property to me, and a major property you already mentioned on Lewis Pack Road. It wasn't even that, I don't think, at that time called. It was Burkeville-Victoria Road. Anyway, that's a dairy farm with John and Will Hamilton. I also had T. Oliver Hamilton, as my brother was down in Crewe. But anyway, I've had this property for that time, but the project surrounds about two-thirds of nearly 385 acres of my property. And as my understanding, it will take two to three years to bulldoze, and you have backhoes and drilling equipment and other equipment to deforest and take away the topsoil of the 2380 acres of land that is in the proposed panel site. This will cause the land to be unusable for viable summer growth. Furthermore, the water runoff from the Sterns track will increase dramatically with no trees to soak up the water. I'm perplexed and confused. It is my understanding that trees take in carbon dioxide and give off oxygen to the environment, which in turn combats global warming. Cities plant trees, and citizens within metropolitan areas are encouraged to plant trees to improve the environment. Brazil has been harshly criticized for cutting forest near the Amazon, which causes global warming. Over 2,380 acres equalized to about 250 trees per acre. I'm saying per acre, and that's a very low estimate, really, which equals 550,000 trees that will be deforested in this proposed solar panel site. That's over half a million trees lost and damaged to the environment. What is the future of forestry in Virginia? In my opinion, if you take large tracts of land, like the proposed 2,380 acres, it will adversely affect the forestry industry from the producer to various forestry industries to the consumers. Solar panel sites are a problem for most of the counties in southwest Virginia. It's, and large tracts of forest lands are eliminated in south side Virginia. It will be devastating to the forestry industry in Virginia. In my opinion, neither the Sterns track nor the Curry track are suitable for panel sites. The steepness of most of this land with gullies and small ravines makes it improbable. You have to, solar panels, and you have to remove the disposal of them. Is Nottoway County going to establish an environmentally effective landfill? The best thing to do is to leave it. The best thing to do is to leave it, the land in forestry, which is its best use. I have seen estimates that the proposed solar site will devalue property up to 25% within four to six miles of the site. The proposed solar energy project has boxed me in. I believe the summer values could drastically be affected. I expect an educated guess of 25 to 35% of loss of income and devaluation of property. Money, money, money. It's what they, 2,380 acres will incorporate headquarters in London, England. My son checked that out, and he got that through the State Corporation Commission is where their headquarters is. Money for Solonnesco with the headquarters in Reston, Virginia, that's in Fairfax County, and promised money to Nottaway. In many instances, money is the root of all evil. I try to live by to doing to others as they would have to do unto me. I would like to each member on this board and also the planning commission to place yourself in my position. Would you like to be boxed in by a solar panel site? Please consider incorporation of the following in your comprehensive plan. Limit solar panels sites to small acreage sites that will not impact the viability of agriculture and forestry. Allow homeowners and businesses to utilize solar features in that alternative source of, as an alternative source of energy. Develop strict guidelines to protect the property rights of landowners, homeowners, and businesses. I believe it is unethical, an invasion of private property rights, insane, and a sin that will impact the viability of agriculture and forestry in Nottaway County to place a solar light central site on the proposed Dickerson Creek Project. The integrity of this county, Nottaway County Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission will be on display with the features you incorporate in your comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Hamilton, stay right there for one second. I want to make sure that any board members, anything, any points of clarification you need? I got one point of clarification, if you don't mind. When you say small, reduce them to small areas, what type of acreage are you talking about? I just want to hear your opinion.
I would think if you follow the guidelines of House Bill 206, that would be in a range of, I believe it's 50 to 80 acres or something like that.
For clarification also, Mr. Todd Fortune, he's referring to on the comprehensive plan, I take it page 91, renewable energy, is that what he's focusing on? Okay. Just keep that in mind, everybody. I like to make sure what areas we focus on in a comprehensive plan. Okay. Thank you, sir, Ms. Hamilton. Thank you for coming up here tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Next one on the list, Ms. Rose Wooten, over on 307 as well. Ms. Wooten?
That's 307.
Yeah. I mean, 723. You didn't, you promised me you weren't ever going to come in public and speak.
I know.
Here you are.
So you know that it means something.
It means something. That's right. I get you.
For me to come out of hiding after retiring from teaching, for sure. Yeah. I'm Rose Wooten. I live on Lewiston Plank Road. In fact, I live .15 miles from the proposed solar site. And tonight, I thought the planning commission meeting and the board of supervisors meeting was only going to be about solar. I had a lot of questions, I mean, pages of them. I had a lot more after I read the draft. And so I'm at, I'm at odds. I don't know how to condense it to what you need in five minutes. You know, I know it took y'all longer to design it, and it took me a while to read it three times. The first time I read it through, the second time I made notes, and the third time, I went back and started scribbling notes because I had to condense it. So tonight, I just have a few things I want to, that are related to solar. Okay? Why was a five mile and two mile barrier between solar sites not included in the comprehensive plan? I know earlier when I came to a board meeting, which I've been coming regular to learn some things, that it was said that you didn't think it was fair to other landowners, and that is a possible, you know, thing there. But when you think about it, that five to two mile separation would keep large solar sites becoming even larger, because if you got like, you know, 50 acres, and then somebody beside him puts 50 acres, and then somebody beside that puts 50 acres, it multiplies. So I kind of didn't understand that one. Okay? Should a comprehensive plan include a statement that a third-party certified environmental consultant or agency study the environmental impacts on the proposed solar sites before the applications are approved? I know that probably Solonnesco and probably Nottaway County have had people out there looking, but is it a third-party person that has an environmental background? And maybe you need two or three different ones. I don't know. But, because like I said, I'm learning on this. Also, on page 92, there was, had a loss of agricultural land and open spaces, and I had something for every page just about, but this one kind of stuck out. The statement's concerning the loss of 11,000 acres of farmland. Well, did anybody decide what was done with that farmland? Was it planted? What percent was planted, maybe in trees? Was it replanted for forestry? Was that what the farmer decided to do after he let that land go, that he could no longer farm, maybe because of age or something or other, and he decided to put it in forestry? It's a possibility. I don't know.
Just point of clarification, you don't want to know why?
I want to, I want to know what percent, do you know?
Oh, what percent? Okay. I'm sorry.
I mean, why, why was it not further studied after you said they lost 11,000 acres? Well, what happened to those 11,000 acres? You know? House Plan 206, or House Bill 206. Why would the county consider a large-scale solar site until House Bill 206 has decided that the guidelines for solar or renewable energy for the state? Should this be addressed in your comprehensive plan? Because they're still deciding. And if you go ahead and put something in, and then they say, well, you know, we don't want that, you know, it's too large, you know, you've got to have more studies done, what are you going to do? You've already got the solar site there. And I'm next door. All right. What does Nottaway see in the future for solar? Do you, is the amount of land, or where in the county? Is it going to be out there on 723 West Courthouse and Old School House Road? Is that where you're planning to put all your solar? Because right now, you know, six miles from me, I've got correctional centers. Six miles to Victoria, I got a correctional center. Now, there's a proposed solar site. All right? And I know you say six miles is a good distance away, but you think about it. When somebody comes and look at my property, they're looking, you know, correctional center, correctional center, solar. So I just, I'm trying to figure out how that's going to work. That's basically the questions I had concerning solar. I am very concerned about solar and the many questions that are not answered. You know, the questions that the community brings forward, and the questions that I know that you have heard many times before. For instance, decommissioning. We've never gotten anything about what happens to decommission, because everybody says it's new technology. Well, you know, you got to figure it out sometime before you put it there. What are you going to do? Right? So there's a lot of questions that still need to be answered, and I understand that. And I know there's got to be other meetings for us to figure those things out. But I appreciate you listening to me. I appreciate the work you did, Mrs. Odi. I appreciate you inviting me to the meetings and letting me sit in so that I could learn more about what was going on. And I do appreciate the fact that you listened to a teacher that was scared enough to be up here. But if you have any questions for me, I'd gladly answer them, because, I mean...
Any, any point of clarification from the board? Okay.
I do have one. And, well, it's not so much from you, Ms. Wooten, but I think you raised the point that, that maybe there's not enough clarity to the public, and I'm a little shaky on it myself, so I just want to clarify. The comp plan, even though it's, there's a suggested timeframe for update, we can update that comp plan anytime, whether it's, you know, one item, one paragraph, whether or not it needs to go to public hearing, that I'm not sure of, but that, that comp plan can be updated anytime. It doesn't have to wait for four or five years. We can do, we can adopt, adopt this comp plan, and in three months, it's visible.
Is that in reference to House Bill 206, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So my thing with that one is, is that when you, they're still trying to decide what they want for guidelines in the state of Virginia for solar. Okay? Renewable energy, solar, wind, whatever. And I don't understand why we're trying to put solar in before we get those guidelines from the state. That's what I'm worried about, is that we're going to put something in that we're going to have to change. Okay? And if there's any problem in the process, what are you going to do about it? Or is that what you're going to mitigate? You know, I've been to the FSA office up in Farmville, and I asked, I said, why isn't soil and water conservation involved in this? Why aren't they looking at all this? And the thing was, we come when there's a problem. Why wait till there's a problem to fix it? Fix it before you start. You know, make sure that you got as much done as you can before. That's how, that's my feelings on it.
Good comments. Good comments. Anybody else want to clarify? All right. Ms. Wooten, thank you so much, and appreciate you coming up. All right. Next one on the list is Sheila Mason. She's laying over on Curry Shop. Thank you for coming, Ms. Mason.
Thank you. Thank y'all for your hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been coming since last April, May. That's when I heard about this proposal for the Solonnesco site near our property. I feel like it's been a shell game a little bit. When it first came, they talked about repealing the ordinance. Okay? Y'all were talking about that. And one thing I remember, one of y'all board of supervisors member kept saying, repeal it. The citizens don't want it. The citizens don't want it. The citizens don't want it. And he repeated it three times. I know. And lo and behold, we repealed it, thinking that was done, right? The new ordinance, but a new ordinance popped up after they had led the citizens believe that they had just repealed an ordinance promising to ban the industrial solar from our county. I do believe certain members of our county administration were sent here by big government and corporate interests to push solar energy into our rural county, come hell or high water. So that's why the shell game. I do understand wanting to improve quality of life here in the county, in Nottaway, with economic development and attracting business for jobs. My guess is that the push for this big solar, though, has to do with the data center, or a distribution center, or an EV or battery facility that demands a large solar facility so that they can hook up, so that they can tout how green they are, and get the tax breaks and subsidies from it, but in the end, still use fossil fuels as their main source of energy, since solar is so unreliable still. I do not understand trying to place industrial solar on agricultural and forested land, when in actuality, y'all's comprehensive plan, the proposed one even, states, quote, and he read this before, but I'll read it again, quote, "The comprehensive plan shall be made with the purpose of guiding and accomplishing a coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the territory which will, in accordance with the present and probable future needs and resources, best promote the health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare of the inhabitants." It goes on to state, quote, "The comprehensive plan serves as a tool for community preservation and development," unquote. Allowing an industrial solar site to decimate agricultural and forested land is far from fulfilling the stated purpose in the comprehensive plan of community preservation. If this Solonnesco site is allowed, which Solonnesco's website basically tout it's already a done deal, if you read through it, you will have allowed the destruction of our good neighbor, Mr. Hamilton's property, that will be surrounded by this site, thus destroying Mr. Hamilton's livelihood from and enjoyment of his land, as well as the pond and waterways included on his property, that will eventually lead to the destruction of waterways throughout the county. Just read the nightmare scenarios of many of the solar industrial sites already blotting Virginia's countryside. 23, 2,300-plus acres touches a lot of people's property here. If you allow this behemoth to move forward, you will also not adhere to your promises to protect the citizens in that area of Nottaway. You will destroy their land values and decrease the overall draw from surrounding urban centers to partake in the recreation offerings and the beauty of our community here. We already endure the presence of a state prison located just outside of Burkeville, District One, as well as a sex offender facility right next to it that presently is being expanded, house an increasing number of sex offenders. What a great draw to showcase our beauty and resources in Nottaway County. District One is tired of being the dumping ground for what others do not want in their districts or their backyards. Now you're going to decimate our landscape further by having denuded 2,300-plus acres of prime forest land, over 1.4 million trees, that would have taken a considerable amount of carbon out of the air. And you're doing this to accommodate 400,000 solar panels, high-voltage substations, and battery storage, and future plans, from what I understand, for a retaining pond to catch all the stormwater runoff from those 400,000 impervious surface panels. Is this what you want? Frankly, that would be a dereliction of the promises you have made in writing as members of these bodies, that you would protect this county and its citizens from such overreach and greed. Please change your comprehensive plan to state that industrial solar has no place on agricultural or forest land and should be limited and placed only on already industrial zone sites, which are present already in Nottaway, or wait until the technology catches up. Solar panels are not there yet. A fire at this proposed site is unthinkable, especially since we have limited capacity to deal with such an event. We are on the cusp of hydrogen fusion, and we are even closer to bricks and panels embedded in already existent buildings and structures. And those bricks and embedded technologies have been proven more effective than solar panels that are taking up our precious land. Albemarle County had the guts and wherewithal to say no to industrial solar. I hope you, as our representatives, have the guts to stand up for what is right as well. Many of you have lived here all or most of your life. Please help us stop this madness. Save your land. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mason, if you, Ms. Mason, before you sat down, just want any, any points of clarification? Any questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Well, actually, real quick, you mentioned the ordinance of solar being voted down, which I'm guessing that was the one that was introduced maybe six months ago to Mr. Antivino, and we worked to collaborate that. And you're right, that was voted down, but then you mentioned a new ordinance.
Right.
And that's what I'm a little confused on, because I'm not aware.
Well, that's what we were confused on, because my friends and I, who opposed this, came to be part of the process. And I remember Mr. Rourke was the one said, vote it down because the citizens don't want it. Okay? So we were under the understanding that the old ordinance that didn't have specific language and that was saying that we would allow solar in the county was voted down, and that we wouldn't have solar in our county. But come next meeting or whatever, all of a sudden, a new ordinance proposition was popped up. And it was, it blew us away. It was like, that's a shell game. They told us it was done, that we were not going to have solar, and then all of a sudden, we were going to have solar.
All right. I understand now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll, we'll do a point of clarification after the public hearing. Can y'all, help me out there? Okay. Because that, she's looking for an explanation. Okay. And, and, and I get it, because you, there was no intent to do a shell game, believe me, but we want everybody to understand what happened that night. Okay? So I will, we'll get, we'll get an explanation.
Well, you can ask these first.
No, no, I believe you. I got you. I understand. Thank you so much. All right. Ms. Tyler Scott, Brunswick Avenue. Good seeing you again. Truly, that's true.
Speaking of pit bulls, now it's solar.
It's okay.
There's no way I can do my colleagues justice. They've been so eloquent tonight, and they know a lot more than I do about this. But I am a citizen who is against solar. I'm from Richmond, and I moved to Nottaway almost five years ago because of the beauty of the land, the wonderful people, and our rural life. And we are going to develop, but we need to be careful. Look at Hull Street. I'm just going to make some remarks about solar. If we let the solar farms in, they will proliferate. It is going to be a Pandora's Box. It'll be a point of no return. We've already had people testify about impact on land, water, animal migration, property values. You can't reclaim the land, and as they pointed out, you can't go back. There's nobody who loves the environment more than I do. I'm from a family of hunters. I grew up fishing for bass and pike in upstate New York. But I hate to say this, a large part of the green industry is about money, making people a lot of money, but not the people in this room and not the people in this county. We are in tough times in this country, and they may get worse, and they may get worse... We are in tough times in this country, and they may get worse, and they may get worse globally. I would think that Nottaway would want to protect its land for the next five, 10, 20, 30, 40 years because we may need food production. On a final point, I just want to say this about solar discussions. I find it very interesting that nobody really wants to talk too much about future impact. And that's because we really don't know what's going to happen. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Any points of clarification for Ms. Scott? I'm sorry. No? Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Appreciate that. All right. Kelsey Redman? Ms. Redman? Thank you for coming.
Good evening to the board and the planning commission.
Good evening.
Thank you guys for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is Kelsey Redman, and I'm a county resident currently living in Burkeville. I promised not to take up too much of y'all's time and put any of y'all to sleep up there. I wanted to come forward and applaud the county's work on the draft comprehensive plan, specifically for the recognition in multiple places throughout the document that mention the importance of maintaining the rural and agricultural nature of this county. I think that's something that most county residents can take pride in. Even if you live in one of our towns, there's really nothing like country living. With that being said, I wanted to come forward, not just as a concerned county resident, but also as an environmentalist, just really not the crazy tree hugger kind. Throughout the comprehensive plan, I noted many instances citing the need for the county to make decisions on the solar issue and for the future zoning of renewable projects, specifically then at the ends of Sections Four, Five, and Six. And I have to apologize to the rest of my county neighbors here because you guys have done a great job of getting the point across already tonight. I really and truly might as well just go sit down at this point. But anyways, right now, our county is one of a handful in a unique situation regarding the status on industrial solar sites. On one hand, you've got residents like myself that are fearful that we could be home to the next grasshopper site disaster. But on the other, there's also the concern that we'd be left in the growth and development dust of the neighbors that welcome facilities like this with open arms. So on that note, we do have, at best, potential to emerge as a leader in solar policy at the local level, or at worst, as just another case of lessons learned for the next locality behind us. I'm really no expert in the solar world, and I have no room to speak in an economic development conversation, but I don't want to see us bury our heads in the sand and ignore such a beast of a topic. While I admit that I do personally have reservations about industrial-scale solar, I can understand the need for zoning and enhanced regulations to address this issue within the county boundaries. I think we can all admit that solar isn't going away anytime soon, and it's my understanding that should a complete moratorium be challenged in court, kind of like what was, I don't know if that's still in place now, but was it June of last year? It probably wouldn't stand up. So it's often said that the best defense is a good offense, and I believe we've got the opportunity to put up a solid offense against these industrial solar developers through county regulations and ordinances. Should the county ultimately decide to move forward with pro-solar regulations, I urge all of you to factor in three items into your decisions. I ask for transparency, stewardship, and a strong emphasis on research and education. Regarding the first point with transparency, I'd like to see public involvement and coordination in every step of the way, like what you're doing, Mr. Bowen, and taking the initiative with calling next month's meeting in Burkeville. Whatever it takes to get your community informed. Regarding my second point on stewardship, yes, environmental and land are the first that come to mind. I think we've heard plenty of that tonight, and we've heard that for years now. The draft plan did a really good job of addressing this, but from a more holistic county resources standpoint, there are questions that pop up beyond the immediate downstream and underground impacts to our water, beyond the adjacent landowner, and beyond what happens once the lease is up and land is turned back over to the owner, the farmer. For example, do our emergency personnel even have the proper equipment and training to handle an emergency response at one of these facilities?
Good point.
Would these panels be dumped in our landfills at the end of their life? Mind you, our landfill right now is looking at, what, a two-to-seven-year timeline for capacity? And I think that was stated in the, in the comp plan. So that's an issue that we're going to be coming up with before we even have to deal with a 30-ish-year timeline on these panels. There's a slew of other items like this that need to be addressed within a policy before we allow the next solar developer to set foot in this county. I know these are getting into specifics, but, and we're talking high-level stuff tonight, but these are things that we really need to keep in the back of our minds. And then going back to the last point of research and education, this one's probably the most critical regarding regulation development. Just because DEQ has developed minimum standards, that doesn't mean that we can't go the extra mile to protect our land. I mean, we've seen just within the past year, if you go back and you look at the DEQ stormwater regulations in March and April, you can see that they're constantly changing stuff. And the fact that they just had to update the fact that solar panels, the panels themselves are considered impervious area, and that wasn't originally in the regulations, goes to show that our state government is still working on this. So we need to be doing the same at our level. There have to be ways for us to sustainably implement what's beginning to seem like a necessary evil, ways to merge a healthy growth of our economy and environmental interest. We just have to do our homework and find them. I want to thank you guys again for your time. I look forward to seeing many components of the draft plan come to life over the next few years, and I'm going to remain cautiously optimistic about the development of our local environmental protection policies. I do pray that you guys will continue to uphold the duties of your positions and that you'll make residents like myself proud to call Nottaway home for years to come. Thank you.
Very well spoken, Ms. Redman. Very well spoken. Hold tight if you don't mind. Any points of clarification, anything that you want to ask, Ms. Redman? Ms. Redman, that question has come up to me with about if they catch fire, what do we do? So that's something that I'm going to ask somebody from the Fire Department to speak of on February 15th at 6:00 at the Burkeville Fire Department because that's, there's people who know that kind of stuff, but I'm not sure what the answer is going to be either. So to be honest with you, that's a good point, and you made other great points as well. So very well spoken. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And she lives on Genito Road. I didn't say that. I don't know if I did or not. The next one on the list is one of our local businessmen, Mr. Brian Wright. I'm glad to see him from Cottage Road. Mr. Wright, thank you for coming, sir.
This is a good idea, getting the planning commission and the supervisors together.
Good, good. Thank you, sir.
Hey, just this week, I noticed solar farms, Middlesex County, Sussex County, in my travel around to stores and even North Hampton and Halifax County, North Carolina, just below our Virginia border. So it seems like they're everywhere, though I just want to request that the county be able to consider a solar project, just means passing a comprehensive plan and enacting a solar ordinance. Then individually, you can unpack, explore, and review any project on its own. And then afterwards, this board, you guys, can approve or deny any project. I recognize there are citizens here tonight with concerns about solar. Sounds mostly for a specific project, and I'm not asking for any support for any specific project. I'm just requesting to add solar into the comprehensive plan and enacting solar ordinance that kind of works for everyone. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very well. Hold up if you would. Mr. Wright, any points of clarification on what he was asking? Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming up here to speak. All right. Next one on the list is Mike Mason. Mr. Mason, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you to the planning commission. Thank you to the board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And thank you guys for working on that comprehensive plan. It had been a monumental task. I'm Mike Mason. I'm a Nottaway County taxpayer with property adjacent to the Cherry Tree Timber. I've got about 2,000 feet of common border. It just baffles me that this is, is an industrial site on agricultural land. How can that be? I mean, I have not yet seen how that can be. I wouldn't be able to do it. For a year now, I've listened to and observed this board as it's craftily positioned itself to be able to legally approve a solar farm adjacent to my property. This is a concern. I get the sense that it's not a concern for Blackstone. It's not in their backyard. I get a sense that it's not a concern for Crew because it's not really in their backyard But each and every one of us that have land adjacent to this site are very concerned about it. If approved, this land will never be the same. There's no one in this room that can convince me that this land next to Cherry Tree Timber will not suffer a land devaluation should this, should this project come to fruition. And for that uncompensated loss and for the destruction of, you know, half a million trees, a million trees, whatever what it was, for the disruption of wildlife and recreation, we care. We've got actual skin in this game where others here don't. All that said, I'd like to take my time to speak to a significantly bigger picture about the solar, and not just solar here in Nottaway. I'm talking about solar energy. It's sort of the elephant in the room. We all just stood here and pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I'm going to say it again, the United States of America. Yet this governing body is on the precipice of playing right into the hands of the Chinese Communist Party by bending to the climate change pressures of our own government and succumbing to the allure of some money. If I had to guess, few, if any, of the citizens of this county will actually get a bite of that dangling carrot. During the 2015 Paris Climate Accord, then-President Obama agreed to reduce the United States' CO2 emissions 25% by 2025 through executive orders and federal regulations. On the other hand, the Chinese Communist regime releases more CO2 than the entire Western world by far. And furthermore, the Chinese declared that they would continue to increase their emissions for the next 15 years. At that rate, at the rate at which they're constructing their coal-fired power plants indicates that they are not going to peak at 2015, which would be the 15-year projection, the Chinese have more coal-fired power plants coming onboard between now and 2015, three years. They have more coming onboard in those three years than the U.S. has in total. In 2020, China had three times the coal power capacity as the rest of the world combined. Combined. What does all this mean for us? As we started shifting towards clean energy, solar and wind, energy prices were pushed higher and higher. Anybody feel that? Energy in China costs about half what it costs in America. Now, the reasons that manufacturers have started shifting all of their production to China are multifactorial, but in many cases, these high energy costs pushed them to the breaking point. Shifting more and more manufacturing to China is literally the worst-case scenario. CO2 emissions are exponentially higher per unit of production in China. As our federal government continues to force feed us renewable energy, the CCP is and will continue to benefit, and not just monetarily. Energy prices will continue to rise here, yet our grid will be more unstable and vulnerable. In 2019, about 80% of the solar panels were made in China. They also dominate the wind and battery markets, as well as rare earth minerals that are used in the production of these green modalities. Our government, in turn, is shelling out huge subsidies to these Chinese sectors, all while forcing green energy on the American people. Take Cherry Tree Timber, for instance. Who benefits? The answer is the Communist Chinese Party. It's absorbing the factories, the jobs, the wealth as we shut down manufacturing to save the climate. Lawmakers and governing bodies need to stop being led like sheep. Start thinking about the long-term effects to our country, same one you just pledged allegiance to, to our state and to Nottaway County. We cannot and should not be lured by a few dollars. Members of these two boards, please stand up and say no to industrial solar on agricultural and forested land. There are other counties within the Commonwealth that are doing so, and for all the right reasons, why not Nottaway? And imparting a word to Blackstone and Crew. Keep in mind that your water supply comes from the very river that the solar I saw will release all its toxic runoff and silt into. Your time and consideration of these thoughts are very much appreciated.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mason. If you would, any points of clarification? Anybody got a comment? All right. Here now, I have one I use, because sometimes we have these hard conversations, but I want to be completely transparent with you. Okay? So about two weeks ago, one of my constituents that are in this room right now told me about this, and Mr. Ingram has affected me. I will not call it a solar farm because it's not a farm, solar facility. So, and I said, well, wait a minute. I mean, because I heard you say, you know, maybe we've craftily orchestrated, I don't know, I only use the terminology. So I called Mr. Costin, Mr. Zodi, had a meeting with them on a Friday for about two hours, and I said, tell me, is there an application out there for this land that everybody's talking about? There is no application. And I said, well, can you give me the area where this land is owned that people are talking about? So Mr. Zodi gave me a map of the, it is over 1,000 acres or 1,500 acres, big plot. But I just want you to know.
2354.
Okay. Well, I just want you to know, maybe I was asleep, but I won't craftily do anything. I didn't even know because there's still not an application out there. Okay? So I just want you to know, complete transparency, the person, there's a person in this room who said, Steve, come on, wake up. They're out there, but there is no application.
My, my point is the same as the shell game that was referred to.
Got, I got you. It makes sense. That makes sense, too. I get you, Ms. Scott. But I just want you to know totally that I'm her.
His website says it's a done deal, they say.
Okay. Well, I don't get that website, and I ain't looking at the website because I'm not doing anything, and this board and these planning commissioners are not doing anything to make any decision that influences our decision. We're listening here, but tonight, we're here to hear our citizens that pay taxes in this county. Okay? Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Good stuff. All right. Yeah, y'all give them a hand. All right. No, it's not time for that. We have people who signed up. If you don't mind, if you don't mind, can you, I was asking, I was giving the point of clarification for the board and the planning commission. However, at the end, when I close it, maybe we can have a little open discussion. I'm fine with that. Thank you so much. Mr. Rash? Ricky Rash? Is he a retired farmer or is he still, I don't know what he's doing?
I'm not retired.
Yeah, I don't think Paul has ever really retired.
I don't retire.
But I do want to warn you, I have already talked for four hours today, and I've got another good hour in me.
Oh, my God. Don't do that to my folks here. Mr. Rash, thank you for coming tonight. And of course, over, he's at West courthouse Road, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. And fundamentally, the site in question, I don't live far from it, just a quarter mile, half a mile. I spoke to you before. I've been out with Mr. Maun. I've looked at the site. I'm not anti-solar. I'm not in favor of industrial solar. That will be my message. But I did look at the plan, and before I get into my remarks, Ms. Wooten did bring up a good point about the 11,000 acres of land. I sent it out in an email. I'm not sure where that number came from. It could be a typo, an extra zero. Just please take a look at that in the plan. When the solar came up, if it wasn't in the comprehensive plan, I probably wouldn't be here tonight. I really and truly hate comprehensive plan. Going through them, I've been through several. I went through one yesterday. I went through one yesterday, and I was warned by a member of the planning commission not to just look at one part of the document, 122 pages. So I did go back and look at all of it. Now, it's not fair to look at the whole document and soundbite it like our news people do on every major issue, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Because that's what people are going to look at. All politics is local. What affects them? What we heard yesterday, that every comprehensive plan should have high expectations. Y'all heard that? See, things happen for a reason. High expectations. Does this get there? Nah, depends on who you talk to. Identity, purpose, and means. I think it does a good job of telling us who Notaway County is. I think it tells us a good job of the purpose of it, but the means on how, all of that language that sometimes gets ambiguous, comes out in the wash. Comprehensive planning is a lot like sausage making. It's kind of a dirty, greasy, grimy process, but when you get it all done and you put that sausage cake on your plate for breakfast the next morning, it's a pretty good product. So you have to get your hands dirty. So everybody remember that this is a painstakingly difficult process. So I'm going to use some of the words that are in the comprehensive plan as proposed and just make some comments. On page one, comprehensive plans are documented use for community assessment, identifying current concerns, forecasting future needs, developing policies, and implement problem-solving strategies. Does it do that? Comprehensive plan shall be made for the purpose of guiding and accomplishing a coordinated and adjusted harmonious development in the territory within accordance with present, probable, future needs, resources, best promote health, safety morals, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare. Does the plan do that? That's a tough question to answer. The governing body shall exercise discretion in how strictly it interprets and follows the plan. That, I think, is where the citizens of the county have the most concern. The board that we have now, the planning commission, I think we can all say we trust them now. What about the future board? What about the future zoning administrator? What about the future county administrator? Do we trust them? Does this plan have the means to get all of that done? One of the things that I was cautioned by an individual that's intimately aware of this is that within the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, it all sets a minimum standard to come in and talk. Once you meet that minimum standard, then you can come in and you can negotiate with the board of supervisors. Have your public hearings, people can come back and talk. I like to put a different spin on it. You put minimum standards in, compare it to the school board, the school systems, SOLs. Are the minimum standards working? You check all of those boxes and you try to deny something, at that point, you're setting yourself up for a lawsuit. That's why I don't like minimum standards. Put it out there, put the guardrails in place, set the safety nets there that can stop you from ruining Mr. Hamilton's pond, ruining the town of Blackstone's water supply when it comes to solar, or any other project that we have. It doesn't matter. The comprehensive plan has to identify all of the purposes and show the citizens the means to get there. I'm not sure with some of the ambiguous language that we have, it does that. Talks about keeping ag and forestry. Yet we want to do away with a million trees. What about the traditions of Notaway County? That's one thing that I haven't heard tonight, I've heard a lot of others. What about the hunting and fishing, the rural aspects of the county? What happens there if you start converting massive amounts of land to any type of development? Is that what you want? In your backyard? And it's possible to be in your backyard, not just mine. Page 96, the county should evaluate its zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance to determine if they place unnecessary restrictions on new housing. There's not anybody in the county that doesn't say we only need one-acre lots. What happens when you get too many of those one-acre lots? The cost of community services skyrockets. Fire, sewer, water, all of these things. Telecommunications. My cows don't go to school. Of course, the solar panels won't go to school either, but are they going to bring in the revenue that we need? What if I wanted to develop my farm? I won't, but what if I did? What, when I transpire, my wife transpire, and my daughters want to develop it? What's in it for them? What can I do? Put it in a conservation easement? Think about the cost of community services coming down the road. One of the things I wanted to bring up to you, being in soil and water fairly regularly, every year, annually, we pave over an area the size of Delaware. Annually. It goes under concrete or asphalt roofs. Do you want to contribute to that? Talking about water and runoff, water quality. Mr. Vaughn, I think you might be the only one on the board, but, and I've never told this publicly, but I'm gonna tell it myself tonight. I didn't like the way the county was doing its ENS ordinance. We didn't, didn't enforce it. And the state never came in and took a look at it. So my time at soil and water conservation, I had a meeting with the director of DCR, and I told him, I said, you need a better system. And from that, they've got everybody on a three-year rotation all across the state for ENS and stormwater. Nobody liked it, but it was the right thing to do. They only looked at the high-impact counties, Fairfax, Chesterfield, and they were already putting stuff in place. It takes a village. Horton here is a who. Takes a yip or yop. But we have to do our part in Notaway County, and so does Northern Virginia, so does Chesterfield, so does Lee County. We all have to work together. Does solar, putting it into the comprehensive plan, fit the comprehensive model, what you said about protecting open land, forest, and farmland? Are you absolutely sure? One of the things that we've heard tonight is about what happens at the end of the 30-year lifespan, or whatever the lifespan is on any site. Many of us in here enjoyed the Grove Drive-In. Anybody drove by there and see how short the trees are? How many years has it been after all of that oil was deposited from the cars there? And it was a source of entertainment? But nobody ever went in to mitigate any of it? And look at how long it's taken to reclaim itself? You want 1,000 acres trying to reclaim itself? Think about it, just right down the road. Some of you don't know where it's at. Many of us do. Consider that. Water source protection. Again, the minimums, you check the boxes. If you try to deny it at that point, they're going to sue you. I propose that you tighten it up. You have to go above and beyond what the state minimum is. We're already talking about the permit by rule. Once DEQ sees that an installation, a solar facility checks all the boxes, it's nothing they can do. Then it becomes a local problem. Bear that in mind as you move forward. Everything that glitters isn't gold. I've got ordinance in my hand, back at my seat, talks about the solar ordinance from Amelia. You know, when they put that big landfill over there, one of the selling points was is it was going to bring in so much tax revenue to Amelia County, it was going to pay you to live there. Or at least that's what it sounded like. That hadn't happened. Now, Amelia's glad they've got it for the tax base, but it didn't do everything they said it would do. Bear that in mind. One of the sections on page 110 and housing, encourage the rehabilitation of dilapidated housing. How is that going to fit in when the solar farm is gone? It's not as easy to reclaim it as it sounds. Be careful when you get population density on any type of large development that you have to provide services. Cost of community services, paid providers, paid fire departments, buildings, infrastructure, to do all of that. One of the things that happens, and I'm so glad Ms. Scott was here tonight. She moved from Richmond to get away from the urbanization, and she tonight said, I want to keep the county rural. You all hear it all the time. You come from an urban area and you want to bring the urban area with you. Let's avoid that. Historic resources. How many historic resources do we have to worry about? The biggest question I have is how and why? How are we going to fit all of this into the prosperity of Notaway County? Why are we considering a new ordinance for renewable energy? Mr. Hamilton said, money, money, money. And I think that hits the nail on the head. But I did go through the whole ordinance. I do hope you have high expectations. I do think you should be cautionary on a checkbox system that the bar is set too low. And I do not believe anywhere in this comp plan that we are protecting our water resources anywhere near what we need. One of the things that Ms. Wooton said tonight, and it frustrates me to no end as a soil and water conservation district director, we can't help a producer out if they came in and bought the 2,300-acre site to start a beef cattle farm. We cannot go in and help them install the best management practices. We can advise them, but we can't help them with financial incentives. Once the first animal hits the farm, then we can help. We cannot be proactive. We have to be reactive. We need to do better. Be proactive in your comp plan, be proactive in your zoning ordinances as you move forward. Try not to be reactive, it'll cost you a fortune in the long run. Please don't just set the minimum because our schools are not doing what they should with a minimum 400 score. Let's get everybody to do better. Let's meet those high expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rash. Any point of clarification? You got something?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Me and Ricky could sit here and have a two-hour conversation easy.
Can y'all do that in Parkland?
Yeah, yeah. And look, some of this might be simple, because Mr. Rash, we've had plenty of conversations, and I know a lot of times, you're not asking a question to educate yourself. You're asking a question you already know the answer to. It's a good policy. This is what I would say. To, and this is putting them on the spot a little bit, but to the CRC and the staff, he asked a question. Does this do what we need it to do?
And let me say this, I was on the committee. Do you mind raising your hand if you was on that ad hoc committee for the planning commission? Because y'all put a lot of work in it. I mean, since 20, yeah, so. And he's exactly right. Todd, I wrote it down. He said it a thousand times, John. I will have to refer to the committee on that. Sometimes we would get one person, like Kirby, might've got real specific, and then, because we not always agree on everything. I mean, that's the way everybody looks at things in a different way. And so what you're saying is, what he's saying is, get our hands a little more dirty and be a little more specific. Is that, that's what he's saying. But it was really hard, it's not Todd's fault. It was, he was saying, it was up to the committee. So it was one easy process.
Well, and this is, again, we already know the answer to this. But if the answer is yes, that's not a fault. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I get you, I get you.
It's not a fault. But clearly, if I may, how many citizens in here think it does not do its job? I mean, you see where I'm going with that? I mean, it's like.
I feel like I just got a D minus.
Right. And that's, and that's what we have to base this on.
Okay, I got you.
You follow what you're following?
Yes, sir.
And it's not derogatory or to hammer anybody down. It's now that we're here to hear from y'all, it gives us another level of expectation. And we need to go that direction.
Right, got you. That's a good point, great point. Good discussion, Mr. Rash, and I appreciate you going through the entire comprehensive plan and not hanging on page 91, 92. I understand to hear from 91 to 92, but thank you for going.
I used it for bedtime reading. Very relaxed.
I'm not taking that as a compliment. Anyway, could we hold tight a little bit and get people talking? Just hold tight on, I know we want some more discussion, and we will. After we close the public hearing, this lady had something she wanted to mention, and then maybe she just wants to confess her phone went off a little while ago. Was that you? Okay, I got you. So let's keep moving on. All right, the next one, the next one on this is John Roy. Are you gonna say something? Please tell me it's not too John Roy, Royal, exciting in the world. Somebody put your name down there, right?
Okay. Problem is, she ate, she did it.
It scared me. If it's another John Roy out there, we got a rough night. All right, Mr. Ingram, Mr. Dick Ingram from Courthouse Road. Thank you, Mr. Ingram, for coming tonight.
My neighbors have done a great job tonight.
Oh, yeah.
I had my little thing here that I asked y'all, I guess it was three or four months ago. I asked y'all a bunch of questions, and Mr. Coben took it upon himself to put it in a newspaper. And I never got any answers from y'all, but a person representing a solar company took it upon himself to write a letter to the paper answering some of my questions. He didn't answer them all. I never heard from any of y'all about them, so I'm just gonna leave it at where it's at.
Do you have the questions with you, sir?
Sir?
Do you have the questions with you?
Right here.
Can you handle Ms. Chuckleton, and we'll see what we can do? Okay? Okay, that's fine.
You can read my chicken scratch.
We're working on it, but thank you. And I apologize for that.
No problem. I've got three quotes I want to read first. This came from the December 1st, 2022. I think it was minutes of a Virginia DEQ meeting. And I quote, "Once altered, Virginia's prime agricultural soils and forest lands cannot be restored to prime productivity." Do you hear that? That's from DEQ. This was another quote. "We're going to change the character and characteristic of rural Virginia if this goes unchecked." This is from Martha Moore, Senior Vice President of Governmental Relations of the Virginia Farm Bureau, which was Mr. Hamilton's post before he retired. And then one I've read to y'all before. "The industry is supposed to be green, but in reality, it's all about the money." And I think we all understand that. We talk about different things that have been proposed for Notaway County, and I go back because I've lived here all my life. I don't think anybody else on the board was, at the time that these two events came up, I think, but must have all. At one time, there was proposed hog farm out in the far southwest part of Notaway County. They were going to raise like 4,000 hogs. Well, somebody came up with an ordinance that made it so difficult, they couldn't build their hog farm. Some of you will remember that Tyson, before then, I think, might have been Holly Farms, wanted to build a chicken processing plant in the Crewe Industrial Park. Oh, my goodness, you never heard such a note roar. Well, it's going to ruin the water supply. You can't do that, it's going to use up all the water. That was defeated. So there's a precedent here for defeating things. I want everybody to understand that. I'm kinda like my neighbor. I want to make sure that we get this thing right. Because I don't want to see Notaway County standing in front of a judge in Richmond or in a federal district court because some solar company, whomever it might be, some industry comes in and we haven't protected ourselves against them. That really bothers me. We don't need to have any more lawyers fees. I think we've had enough for a while. I was looking over, uh, and I've had people come, oh, well, your electric bill's gonna be lower. No, it's not gonna be lower. Because that, that energy is not gonna be used in Notaway County. That's going in those transmission lines. And it's going somewhere else. And, uh, take a look at your electric bill. Dominion Energy asked the State Corporation Commission for a rate hike to pay for the solar farm, I mean, for the windmill farm out in the Chesapeake Bay. What do you think they're gonna do when they have to pay for all these solar farm, uh, excuse me, industrial sites? That they're buying. They've already bought the one in Charlotte County. So I mean, where is that cost gonna go? They're not gonna, Dominion's not gonna absorb that. That's going to the customer. So you gotta understand, you know, this, this is a pass along. And Dominion is a great big company with great big deep pockets. And they'll hire the best lawyers they can find, and they'll come down here and they'll just put it to us. I hope not, but you know. I looked at, uh, some comments from Charlotte County. Charlotte County's ordinance on solar said that the solar, if, if there is a solar industrial site built, it can only take up three percent of the surrounding area. Guess what? The Randolph site is already nine point one percent. And the Tall Pines is alre, already four point nine five percent. So what do they do? They buy or lease the land around them, and then they come back to the, to the board and say, hey, look, no, we got this land. Can we add it on? And if you hadn't protected yourself, you can't say no. That, you know, that really upsets me. I, I gotta, I search all over the place for these things, y'all. Amelia County. Amelia County passed an ordinance, which Mr. Hamilton gave me a copy of, and I hadn't had a chance to really look at it, but I looked at it online. And the reason I found it was because I looked up this company that's sponsoring the free food and drink in Blackstone next week. So I want to find out who they were. Lo and behold, they were the same people that won a different deal a while, a while back. Now they've changed the name of it, okay? And now it's, uh, Energy Smart Virginia, I believe is the, the, the name of them. So I looked them up. They're all lobbyists, y'all. They all lobbied for people. So you know that who's paying their salary is what I want to know. I would guarantee you it's solar companies and Dominion. That's who's paying their salaries. And they're coming out and telling you what you need to do with your property and your land and your county, okay? And they're gonna feed you and wine and dine you at the Blackstone Inn next week. It's a free meal. But I won't be there. Amelia has one thousand foot setbacks from property, lines and roads. Five thousand feet setbacks for battery storage. No more than three percent of land area in a five-mile radius. I wrote it right off. Now, I was here when Mr. Zodi got up and said, we got this ordinance and we're proposing a one-mile strip on either side of the transmission line. I both fainted. A one-mile strip on both sides, two miles wide, going through the county along those transmission lines? I mean, how much land is that gonna take up? And most of those transmission lines, my friends, are on forest land and farmland. You can go follow them. I followed them. I know where they are. I had a farmer out on the, uh, northern end of the county. I didn't realize it went through his property. He says, yeah, it goes right through my property. He said, I don't know how many people, how many solar people have called me and wanted to get up with me. He said, I'm not gonna do it. As long as I'm alive, I'm on farm. But that's what's gonna happen. If you allow that much area, it's, I mean, they're gonna be all around you. So I think in, in your ordinance or in your comprehensive plan, you need to set a specific amount of land that you are willing to see developed in those areas. I mean, you gotta, I'm looking at agriculture right there. That big white area on the southwest side of Notaway County is where I live. I maybe be a mile and a half from this one proposed, and don't tell me it's not in, I mean, this application, none of us would know anything about this if Billy Coben hadn't printed that article on the front page of the Curia Record saying seven hundred thousand, or four hundred thousand solar panels on seven hundred acres. Somebody knows something. Mr. Costin probably knows, Mr. Zodi probably knows, but somebody knows something. That thing's in the works. And I guarantee you they're more in the works. I talked to Mr. Anzavino after one meeting. And he pretty much told me they're, they're in the pipeline. So I'm with Mr. Rash on this one. Protect yourselves. Protect our county. Protect our land. Protect our resources. Protect our hunting and fishing and water and rural area. And I'll go along with the, the, the comment on this, uh, Mr. Hamilton's area. If you've ever been down Old Schoolhouse Road, if you go down there tonight, you might get stuck. It's a dirt road that runs from West Courthouse and comes out at Lewiston Plank. It's a dirt road. And it's all pretty much forested land. There's some people who live along that road in the area, the front area. And Mr. Hamilton's son has built a, a nice, he calls it a cabin out there next to the pond. But can you imagine trucks hauling stuff in there? And, and, and one other thing I found out, there's something called soiling. Soil accumulates on the solar panels, reduces their efficiency. And y'all know how soil is, once you, if it rains on something, where's it going? But can you imagine the dust and dirt that will be in the air when they bring those things and the wear and tear on the county roads? I mean, that's just, it's frightening to me. But anyway, I'm with my neighbor. Protect yourselves. And like Mr. Rook says, if you have to go back and change the comprehensive plan later, you can change your comprehensive plan later, but right now make it as strict as possible to protect all of us. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Very well. Good point. It, yeah, any?
Real quick, Ms. Ingram.
Yes, sir.
You quoted some, uh, some, uh, actual, uh, rules or setbacks from Amelia. Did you get that out of their comprehensive plan or did you get that out of their actual?
I got it from Mr. Mr. Hamilton, but here it is. It's the ordinance.
It's out of their solar ordinance, not their comprehensive plan?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But it says, it's called a, uh, section one comprehensive plan amendment. Says land use decisions should respect the goals and policies of the comprehensive plans revised rural and agricultural planning areas.
And it gives a specific setback distances and everything in that amendment?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
The reason I caught it was when I went to look at that website of that company that's having the free food. I saw that the guy had written a letter to the Amelia Bolton Monitor complaining about what I read.
Good point of clarification. And any, any more, if, if you got another point of clarification, I might have to ask Ms. Ingram to get back to the microphone so the public can hear, you know, this at home. Anybody got anything else? So with that comment, um, with the questions that you didn't get answered, I'm gonna ask Mr. Zodi, Mr. Constant to answer your questions per email and copy the board. And if they can't answer because it's a board question, um, they're gonna say, I gotta refer this to the board. But when I sent an email to you to answer the question, I can't copy them and we can't have a conversation because it's a meeting. You got you? So, so know that some things they might, they can't really answer. Really, it's gonna have to come through. Okay.
No problem.
Ms. Ingram, okay, thank you. All right. All right, going down the list. Seth, um, Maham, is that right? Did I say it right? Thank you for coming, Seth.
Yeah.
One of these days, we're gonna invest some money in that, but we've kind of a tight budget right now.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Seth Mon. I'm a representative of Solar UNESCO. Uh, you've heard that name a lot tonight. You probably recognize me. I've been here, uh, for the past, geez, four years now. You know, we are one of the handful of, of solar developers who, who are hoping to bring some business to this county, bring our business to this county. Uh, and are certainly interested in what's going on with the comp plan today. We're, you know, we've become one of the more prevalent ones because yes, at one point, we were working with the county to put together a, 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 a special exception permit back in, I believe, twenty nineteen. And then the moratorium was put in place. And, and we decided, obviously not decided, we, we halted our, our application, even though it was more or less ready to go at that point. Uh, at a certain point, maybe a year or so after that, we gave a draft of that application to the county, hoping that maybe it would help in crafting what, what they were working on at the time, which was the zoning ordinance. That is the application that was foiled by the paper. Unfortunately, our plan to help give a example application to the county has backfired for us and, and we're now the, uh, the center of law of attention. That application is way out of date, not relevant and not active. I want to make that clear. We do not have a zoning application with the county, nor do we have the ability to file a zoning application with the county, nor do we intend to try to force a zoning application with the county until the county is ready to receive it. We hope that will be soon. This project is getting very long in the tooth. But we, we can't even plan it until we see what's in the zoning ordinance. As has been pointed out, uh, you know, standards have, have, have been suggested to be changed. We, and, and, you know, frankly, we're, we're waiting to see what the county would like to see out of a project so that we can develop a project that fits with the needs of, of this county. I think there needs to be some level setting here. As some people have said, there's some confusion perhaps on what this hearing tonight's even about. There's been a lot of tension on a specific project. There's a lot, been a lot of tension on the zoning ordinance. And, and of course, this meeting is about the comprehensive plan. Right now, we are two steps removed. At one point, we were one step removed, and at one point, we were ready to put an application in. You know, we feel like, unfortunately, we keep moving backwards as, as the county continues to consider this. We certainly urge the county to do what you need to do to feel comfortable. But, you know, hoping that we can keep our sites set appropriately, uh, so that frankly, we don't lose this opportunity to, to, to develop this project and the county never even gets to consider it. Today, it's, it's the comp plan. Uh, there was, there was discussion of the need to add some language around solar before the, the ordinance was adopted. Uh, I will note, as I did then, that several neighboring counties have adopted ordinances and approved many projects with no mention in their comp plans. Period.
Right.
That's clearly not something this county is comfortable with, but I just want, want to state that. I, I don't personally believe there's a legal requirement. If this county is more comfortable with having some language in the comp plan, I certainly want this county to feel comfortable before moving forward, but I do want to just mention that as, again, a level setting here. Once that, that basic language is in the comp plan, as I believe it is today, the language that you have is as robust or more robust than, than any of your neighbors. It, it gives a good, uh, ground level, uh, balanced perspective on how the county might consider solar, if it wants to consider solar. Then the county can enact an ordinance. Many of the concerns I've heard tonight are, are concerns we hear all the time, and, and they're, they're well-intentioned, and I totally understand them. Uh, I would say that many of them are factually incorrect. Again, well-intentioned, and I, I know where they're coming from, but they're just factually incorrect. And I would caution anyone in the audience or on the dis to, to, uh, ask for, for some documentation to, to back up some of the, the claims and assumptions that have been set. I would love to have the time to respond to all of them, but I would have to take as much time as everyone prior to, to do so. And I, I don't think we want to get into that level of detail. Frankly, the time to be addressing concerns like that is through the special exception permit. Each one of these projects is vastly different. It's, it's going to be very hard and unfair to, to everyone in this room to try to, to capture everything that could possibly contemplated on any solar project with, with a, an ordinance, let alone a comp plan. I, I would advise, and I think Mr. Rash was correct in saying, you know, don't, don't put, you know, minimums, don't, you know, don't want to pigeonhole yourself into a check the box. The more you put into your ordinance, the more you're creating a check the box scenario. The ordinance could simply say, we allow, uh, 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 applications for solar projects to be approved at the discretion of, of, of the, the board and, and, and the plan commission. And you could approve zero projects. And, and there's no boxes to be checked, and there's no complaints later that, hey, I checked all your boxes. So, you know, uh, I think in line with Mr. Ash's comments, you might want to think about how lengthy your ordinance is getting and how much it's starting to look like some of the DEQ ordinance, which is, uh, to a degree, check the box. I would note that there are some, sub-permits required of that that are less so, but that's another story. I'm rambling a bit, uh, but I, I do want to keep the focus, I think, on the purpose of this hearing tonight, which is the comp plan. That's supposed to be very broad guardrails. The ordinance then, which has been tabled since, I believe, May, so that this could be updated in the comp plan, I, I think does a good job of addressing some of the, the more realistic and, and legitimate concerns that have been brought up here tonight. I think a lot of the people have mentioned concerns such as decommissioning that have already been fleshed out in great detail in, in that, uh, in that, or, uh, proposed ordinance that, that's still on the table. And, uh, I'm, I'm hoping we can move forward with this comprehensive plan. I don't think there's really need to get too specific in a comprehensive plan. The ordinance is the place to do that. And I think you have already gotten plenty specific in the ordinance. And then really, the place to get specific is on a specific project. That's where you're gonna protect yourselves. That's where, that's where we get to have the proper platform to respond to all these, 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 uh, these concerns in more than five, or I'm probably over five minutes now, but, but ten minutes. I, I can't possibly respond to all these, all these concerns, uh, in the context of an entire industry with the imagination for, of any project that might come before y'all. I can respond to them in the context of my project, tell y'all what, what is and is not relevance to our project, why it is or isn't relevant to the project. And those that are, I can, I can tell you what our plan is for, for mitigating them, uh, or ensuring quality assurance. And, and, and you guys in the community get, can, can grill the project. And, and, and if you like my answers, you can, you can apply conditions and approve the, the project. If you don't like my answers, you have the legal authority to, to deny the project. And that is the purpose of the special exception permit process. I feel like we keep getting punted back and having the same comments and concerns raised that are really project-specific. And, and they're kind of a couple of energy levels removed from where they should be. And I just, again, want to level set here, get everyone thinking about the context of the discussion tonight and future discussions. If you move forward with this comp plan, we're gonna have these same comments and these same questions when it comes to the ordinance. And then we're gonna have the same comments and same questions when it comes to the project. And then you guys can come again when it comes to the, the DEQ permitting. That's also a public, uh, comment, uh, enabled, uh, process. So we, and, and I'll be here. I'd like to answer a lot of these questions that have come up tonight. But again, I obviously can't talk much longer, so.
That's fine. I'm, I'm, just a point of clarification. I am having, um, a town hall meeting on February fifteenth and, and, um, in, at the Berford Firehouse at six o'clock. And if you want to sit in the background and, and answer some questions that I may not be able to answer, um, you're welcome to come there.
We're always pleased to answer questions.
I pronounced your name wrong and I apologize, Mon.
It's, it's, it's easier to pronounce that looks. No worries.
Apologize to you, sir. Apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, um, well, we're getting down, as, as my dad would say, we're getting down to the short roads. All right, Blake Cox from, um, Chester, Virginia. Mr. Cox, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir. Great to be here. Supervise commissioners, thanks for having me here tonight. I'm with, I'm Blake Cox. I'm with Energy Right, um, not Energy Smart. Um, and we are the ones having the event, uh, on February sixth, and that's a Monday. It's gonna be from four PM to seven PM. Um, it's an educational event. It's simply there for people to come out there and ask their questions. Yes, we will have, uh, food and drink. I hope that would be a plus. But so just hope the community will come out and ask their questions and, uh, get things answered. So appreciate your time.
All right. Well, thank you for, for coming, Mr. Cox, and, and letting us know about that. Thank you. Another, another business I want to hear from Blackstone, we got Ms. Mitchell. I didn't see you come in tonight. Is she here? Oh, okay. All right. Set aside Ms. Scott. I didn't, I didn't know y'all knew each other. No, I'm kidding. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. When I came here tonight, it was really because I had a lot of questions. I'm just, I'm, I'm just. I'm just, I'm just a lot of questions about solar. And I know somebody had mentioned, well, nobody from Blackstone would probably really be concerned about this because it doesn't, you know, impact them directly or their water source. That was mentioned, and it's ironic really because I just recently, over a week, received two notifications that our water source is in question in Blackstone, which is a little concerning for those of us that live within the town limits. And it got me to thinking, you know, when I'm sitting there listening, over and over again, this topic has come up about solar. And, you know, I've tried to figure out how it really would impact me in any way. Would I choose to put solar panels on my house? Would I choose to put them in my yard if I was given the opportunity or the choice to? And I think that the idea of an alternate source of energy could be beneficial. But I don't think we have enough information about the specifics, and that's concerning for me. We talked about water source. That is a huge concern for me, obviously, in our town. It has nothing to do with anything outside of the town limits. You know, we've got this notification that is concerning. I would be interested in natural gas. I would be interested in any kind of option that might, I don't know, give us the opportunity to have a lower rate for energy for the people that live in this county because right now, we are suffering in many ways. And it's not just our county, it's many counties, it's this whole country. We know that. The idea that maybe we should just pull back and kind of let the leaders lead, maybe the general assembly, let this come through the process of Dylan's rule and figure out what we're capable of actually acting on before we make a decision at a local level might be the best choice at this point because it's very contentious, really contentious. A lot of people are very upset, and the conversations that are had outside of this area on just every day, back and forth in a business, on the street, it's not a positive thing. And we have enough negativity right now. We've had enough negativity over the last year and a half that this shouldn't be one more thing. It just really shouldn't. So, while I understand that it's an opportunity, and it certainly is an opportunity, and I'm sure there's lots of opportunity for discussion about the opportunity, it might be best to let the leaders lead and look at the general assembly as our guideline. But that was just my personal, thanks.
That's good. Point of clarification, I guess that's referring back to House Bill 206 that everybody's been concerned. Okay, all right. All right, good points, good points. Thank you so much for coming, Ms. Mitchell. Another business owner here, Ms. Yates. Yates, thank you for coming, ma'am. And this is the last speaker, by the way, so just.
And I don't think I'm going to take a lot of time.
That's all right.
Believe it or not. And I did not come prepared to speak tonight, but I have a whole lot of questions, and I'm very impressed by all the research that these citizens have done and how they've asked questions in which they're concerned. Sure.
Wait a minute. Just one second here. We need to speak, I don't want to get into debate, and you're really here to talk to the planning commission and the board members so we can listen. And you can have, I'm sure that Mr. Mon will have a long conversation with you in the parking lot and come to the meeting on February 15th or anything he wants. But I don't want to get into a debate with people because we all have different views, and we need to respect each other.
Okay, that's fine.
But thank you, Ms. Yates, thank you.
With that being said, I am sure that any solar company would be really pleased if we had no ordinances and if the ordinances were loose. That is an easy way for a large company, solar company, to edge their way into a door and sell, make a good sale, okay? Just an observation. Let me go through. I'm going to kind of look at what I've written down tonight and questions that have come as I've listened. Jobs. How many will this employ? If this solar farm comes to be, how many jobs will it create for Notaway County ongoing? In light of the fact that we don't have a lot of jobs in Notaway County that are, you know, high-paying and whatnot, I think that question needs to be answered. I'm going to make a personal comment tonight, an observation, and that is that, and I'm not saying, well, I'm going to put it on the record, I am opposed to this solar farm so anyone knows where I come from. With that being said, each day when I get up, one of the things I tell myself is that I should be a good student every day. We should never be so old that we think we know everything. And so, I'm open to the idea, if someone can explain to me how it's going to help us, and I'm open to that with an open heart, with an open mind, okay? And I think that's really important. Our county has gone through a huge amount of transmission, transition over the last four years since I've become involved. We've had new leadership come on. We have, I mean, we have one new, you know, board member. So many things have gone on through the county. And I agree with the other citizen, some of it has become quite contentious over time, and that's sad. But my feelings about this solar farm, just in general, about solar, an industrial solar farm, is that it's premature to everything that we have on our plate right now. Our county doesn't even have proper ordinances in place. How on earth can we even begin to imagine, in the smallest dreams, that we're ready to move into something as large as an industrial solar farm? We need ordinances. We need our county cleaned up. We have a high poverty level, which needs to be dealt with. And I don't happen to believe that we should keep our county in poverty, which is what we tend to have done over the last years. What we need to do, and I understand what it's like to be poor and to be poverty-stricken, I get that. That's where I came from, and it's not fun. But we don't need to, I see this solar farm issue right now, this big sale of this solar farm as something that's not going to help take us out of poverty. We have other areas or other discussions to be had to build our community long before we can discuss having an industrial solar farm. We have trouble, we've had trouble, ongoing troubles with our landfill. It works, and does it still work in the red? I'm assuming it does. We still don't even have the landfill out of the red. We haven't even figured that out. So, one of my big concerns about the solar industry, this solar, this big industrial solar farm, is when these solar panels lose their life, they have to go somewhere. And they're either going to lay dead on the ground in which they were propped up, or they're going to be hauled off to our landfill, which we can't even handle on our own right now. So many big issues that need to be taken care of. And this is why every one of you were elected, is to protect us. This is premature. It's just, and shouldn't even be a part of our plan, of our comp plan right now because it's too much to consider with everything else we have to do. That's my opinion. I made a comment here. While Notaway County is old, we are in an infant stage because our county hasn't been taken care of for so long. So, we're really in an infancy stage of turning things around. And I'm glad to see that things are, there's attempts being made to turn things around. I got into a conversation on the internet one night with a solar guy that was trying to do solar in Notaway County, I guess, I don't know. And we bantered back and forth and back and forth. And when I finally put this person on the hot plate and said, "What about their end life? What happens then?" The conversation was abruptly stopped. When I really got down to the brass tacks, the conversation was dropped, okay? And that concerns me. We're the sixth highest in poverty. Keep that in mind, guys. And in some ways, I wrote this down, I think that there is a possibility that Notaway BOS are looking at solar as a sort of rescue plan because so much has been done for, so much has not been done for Notaway for so long. And I don't think we should be banking our future on something that is not proven, you know, over time. We have water issues. We have, you know, Mr. Costin and you guys having to try to bring our towns together just to figure out water issues. Crew in Berkville, you know, are not in good shape right now, especially Crew. So, we've got that issue. Just, so I'm not studied on solar. I've done a little bit of reading up on it. I went into that bantering stage with this guy on the internet, and, you know, he shut me, or whatever, he/she shut me down. But it's just, in my opinion, it's way premature, and it should not even be a part of our comprehensive plan at this time.
Okay.
And let me just check my notes real quick so that, make sure I caught everything here. Comment. I kind of feel like our new regime in the administrative office is moving too fast with not enough being done to correct our basic foundation. We have to fix the, we have to fix our foundation, okay? I think that does it, guys. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Yates. Any points of clarification, Ms. Yates? Okay. All right, hearing that, yeah, very well, thank you. Hearing that, so I am, the board of supervisors is going to close the public hearing. Barry, for the board.
Yes, planning commissioners.
Yes.
You did indicate that you might have a conversation.
Yeah, but I was going to close the public hearing and do that.
I would caution against that.
Caution against what?
Against having, closing the public hearing and then taking additional comment.
So, you would say, keep the public hearing open?
Keep the public hearing open.
So, we've had comments, I'm going to allow three questions. I think that's fair because I know it's two pending out there for clarification. One big one is the clarification of we've been, like, we're trying to move.
And I can speak to that, but I didn't know.
Okay, so I will take my comment back as a chairman, not to close the public hearing yet.
Perhaps, Mr. Chairman, what you might want to do is just see if there's anybody who wishes to speak who didn't sign up.
Oh, okay.
And then, if there's.
I thought we had a time on that. Okay, got you. Yeah, is it somebody that wishes to speak that didn't sign, Mr. Abbott? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Costin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Barry, ladies and gentlemen, fellow citizens, I will be brief because I learned a long time ago, the mind will absorb only what the seat can endure.
Amen, amen.
And y'all have been sitting there a while. I'd like to go back to the comprehensive plan. And can you outline in the last 12 to 14 pages in the comprehensive plan the means to achieve those goals or objectives? It doesn't seem clear in those last 12 to 14 pages because I'd like to take you back into one of the demographics. In one of the demographics, it says, "More of us are going to die in Notaway County than will be born here." So, what does that mean if we're going to have an increase in population? We're going to have to figure out how to get people to move here. And since solar has been the predominant subject tonight, is solar the reason that that will happen? Answer that question to yourselves. I can tell you, I don't think so. I think there are a lot more things that need to happen in a county as part of a comprehensive plan that provides what's identified, what its purpose is, and the means to achieve those goals and objectives. Mr. Rash brought it up. What are our expectations? Are our expectations just to get along? Or are they to achieve something greater? And that's what that comprehensive plan should make. Our goals and objectives that are greater than what we know today, that make us all greater than what we are today. I know that if a solar panel lasts 30 years, I won't be here to see it. I'll be gone before the solar panel because I don't think I'll make 107. But my concern is the funding. We talk about the revenue stream. There are no revenue streams in the comprehensive plan. If a facility, that is any kind of facility that's put in Notaway County, it generates some kind of revenue. How in those last 12 or so pages are the funds that we need to generate going to achieve those goals? The comprehensive plan doesn't seem to explain that. Not specifically, not generically, not in any way. There have been some other things that people have brought up. And one of those is trust. It's trust. We have to trust all of those who have been appointed and who have been elected to make the correct decisions. I hope that as we go back and look at that document, that we can reassure that all of the steps of a strategic plan, because that's what this really is, is a strategic plan to achieve the expectations for the next number of years. Thanks for listening.
Good point, that's all right. Very well, okay. Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Is anybody else that did not get a chance to speak tonight, that didn't sign up, came in a little bit late? I know it was a rainy night, and good point, Mr. Costin, not everybody gets out early. Would you come up here and then state your name and tell us where you live at? I would really appreciate it, for the record. And by the way, I'm sorry, Mr. Abbott lives on Bible Road, and how do I know that?
Little Creek.
Little Creek.
Little Creek. But it's over near, but he says, you see the sign, "God," and he says, "Turn left." Is that right? I don't, it's really true, I'm telling you. So, I'm sorry, thank you for coming.
Actually, I'm nowhere near where the solar panels are going to be, I don't believe.
And your name?
Sharon Jennings.
Sharon Jennings, thank you, Sharon.
But I do want to say this. As he spoke and said that, you know, you don't have to tweak everything, and you don't have to put everything down, and, you know, you can have not so many boundaries. The first thing that a lawyer will tell you is if you don't set those boundaries, their comment back to you is going to be, "They've already set the precedence." They can't add this because they've already set the precedence that you didn't do it first off. So, keep that in mind. The other thing is, when was the first project that he did do? I can't keep this thing out here.
I'm sorry about that, Mike. Mr. Zodi, can you assist with that mic or somebody, please? Sorry about that. Wow.
So.
We might get you fixing next time.
I'm good at fixing stuff.
Just hire her and keep her here in the meeting.
So, when was the first project, and what were their problems? Has anybody researched that? I do know that in the past couple of years, they put one in Chase City in Mecklenburg County, which is where I moved from. And the town's still dead. I know that they put one in Buckingham County. I've heard nothing but complaints from the locals. And if we're having problems with water in Blackstone and Crew and Berkville... And if we're having problems with water in Blackstone and Crew and Burkeville, why are we even considering this? Why aren't we fixing that? That is one of your major needs. People can't live without food or water. And what are the kickbacks? How does it help? What does it do for our future, for the county? I have four children. 30 years, I don't want a wasteland. I also own a business here in the county, and I know that when you make the people happy, when you stand up for the people and you give them, you really listen to them, it's community that makes it work. Okay, so I just want to end with, do the research. Don't listen to the numbers.
Right.
Listen to the people that live near them. And set the precedence. Set the bar high. Because if you don't set the rules to start off with, that's the first thing their lawyers will open with. They've already set precedents, and you can't change it now.
Good point.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any point of clarification anybody needs from her? Okay. All right, anybody else that not gets, and thank you for coming up here. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Costin, I'm taking your advice then, so don't close the public hearing to answer the three questions that I'm going to allow, right? Okay. Ms. Yates, is it something else? I'm sorry, you raised your hand a couple times.
I just, if this is an open forum, and I hear what Mr. Costin's saying, I thank you, Steve. That's, we just made history together. I thank you, Steve, for being willing to let the people speak.
Okay.
Because this is a really important issue. We need to be free to speak, Mr. Costin, without limitation.
Understand, understand. And Mr. Perry, I'll also thank him because he had to agree with that, and I really appreciate his leadership on the Planning Commission as well. And thank you. And I think, well, I think we started off, and I think we started off right. We want to get it right, folks. We want to get it right, okay? Things you might hear, but, you know, here, we're really trying to, we're trying to tell you to be transparent and get it right. Mr. Costin, if you don't mind, could you come up to the mic? I want to go to, was it Ms. Mason's comment? Was it Ms. Mason's comment? Anyway, so it did get, I like your example. I didn't like it, it hurt. But I did understand. But I did want to say this before, Mr. Costin, as part of this is, I'm going to have to take some ownership here. I'm the one who put the moratorium in, because I saw it coming, and it was too fast, just like Mr. Ingram, y'all brought things, no, somebody else said, you know, things moving too fast. And so we put the moratorium in, and then we had meetings with the county administrator in Mecklenburg County, Wayne...
Wayne Carter.
Wayne Carter, thank you so much. And he said, get the comprehensive plan right. Get the comprehensive. And then we, Mr. Roig left, and we went through a transition as Ms. Yates had brought up, and we brought Mr. Anzavino in, and Mr. Anzavino said, you know, we got to get the zoning right, and zoning. And we kept having meetings about zoning, and we was advertising, and I kept thinking, that's not, I don't think that's what we said. Anyway, so we went back in the minutes and looked, and it was really, I said, we took the advice was to get the comprehensive plan first. So I put the, I think I put the cart in front of the horse. I'm not exactly sure what happened here. But, Mr. Costin, if you could try to explain a little bit of that and what happened in that part right there.
Most of what you said I had written out here.
Yeah, I got you.
To stick to. So let me, let me just, you know, clarify a couple of things. And I think it's important to note, and Mr. Bowen's already addressed it, this solar facility placement issue was ongoing prior to Mr. Zodi's arrival, prior to my arrival, prior to Mr. Anzavino's arrival. And it was an issue when your prior staff was in place, and specifically, I had a note here to recall Mr. Carter, the county administrator from Mecklenburg County, did a presentation, I understand, to the board of the Planning Commission. But there was some presentation where he said exactly what Mr. Bowen said, which was, you got to get the zoning in place. And yes, there was a moratorium, and one of the earlier speakers said, you know, it might have been a little shaky. Yeah, it's very shaky. The application was made under the then zoning ordinance provisions of renewable energy, which are both solar and wind. And it's been described to me as basically an agreement was reached between county representatives and the applicant, Solinesco, to hold their, to hold their application until the zoning ordinance could be updated, fixed, made a lot tighter. It was loose. What has been considered previously was much, was much tighter. That application was made, but it was never processed. I have myself returned the check to the company, and that was in certified mail, so we made sure we didn't lose the check. So there is no active application anywhere in the county by any company. Now, I do know, Ms. Simmons, you'll remember last year at VACO, there was this blow-up about an application coming in around Crew.
Yes.
That application never came in. But the company was spoken to by Mr. Anzavino, and they were advised then that the board would not be receptive to receiving that application. So a zoning ordinance amendment was developed, along with a siting and revenue-sharing ordinance. The zoning ordinance went to public hearing with the Planning Commission and then the Board of Supervisors, which at the same time heard the other two ordinances. The end result was the repeal of the renewable energy provisions in the zoning ordinance without replacement, okay? The reference was made to one of the board members saying three times, the people don't like it. That's exactly what happened. The zoning ordinance amendment was not accepted, but the zoning ordinance provisions in place were repealed. So right now, you have no way to even make a solar application. But that conversation also included the caveat, until the comprehensive plan could be brought up to date and solar addressed. Now, there was some confusion about how far along we were with the solar, excuse me, with the comprehensive plan, but here we are tonight. We are now talking about the comprehensive plan. Let me just say, there's no shell game, there's no in-run, there's no back-room deal. The staff has done everything that the Board of Supervisors has asked us to do, and that is to get us to this point this evening, which is, we're talking about a comprehensive plan. And I'll go back to the beginning of the evening. It's a guide. Your zoning ordinance is your enabling language, and that is your regulatory language that could, depending on how the ordinance is set up, but in the provisions that you all have seen, allowed for a special exception for a site-by-site consideration. It's with the board to decide in the end to either put in some language for solar that would allow the zoning ordinance to go forward and to consider opportunities on an individual site-by-site basis, or to leave it out. And if you leave it out, you're going to be where you are, which is, you have no mechanism, no way to bring forward solar. I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
I'm allowing two more point of clarification questions, or another question that we didn't address that you won't show up. You had raised your hand, Ms. Jenkins, but you came up here. Are you okay now? Not, maybe the word "okay now" might not have been the way to describe it. Any other questions? All right, good stuff. Now, I would like to close the public hearing for the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, and I'll close it on behalf of the Planning Commission.
I move to close the public hearing.
Sorry, thank you, John.
The joint meeting, the joint public hearing of the Nottaway County Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission.
All right, so I got a motion to come out of closed session by Mr. Roig. Thank you, Mr. Roig, for the point of procedure, I appreciate that. And I got a second by Ms. Simmons. Any further discussion? Here, none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Same sign. Mr., you have the floor to take, to entertain a motion to come out of closed session, I mean, public hearing, I'm sorry, for the Planning Commission.
Okay, Planning Commission, as you all have heard, the, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved and properly seconded that the Planning Commission will close this public hearing. All in favor? We usually raise our right hand. Oppose, at the same rate.
Thank you.
While I'm standing, I would like to thank Mr. Bowen, our chairman, for allowing this Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors to come together tonight, too. And I think we've accomplished a lot. We heard everything that we needed to hear from you all, and that was the purpose.
Right.
And I think Mr. Abbott made a good point. Trust. Trust your appointed officials, trust your elected officials. We all love Nottaway County.
Amen.
We're not going to do anything to hurt Nottaway County. So let's trust. And not only trust us, trust God. God not going, we all godly people.
Yes, sir.
And we're going to do the best we can. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perry. And if y'all would, the Planning Commission, I mean, it's one of the hardest and sometimes thankless jobs. Would y'all give the Planning Commission a big, they do a wonderful job. I really do. So thank y'all. So I'm getting into adjourn, and so it looked like to sum it up, you know, it was about the comprehensive plan. We got to go back, thank Mr. Rash and a couple of people said, you know, go through, get it more little, how, and then Mr. Abbott said, you know, it is a strategic plan and how you going to accomplish them goals. And so, but I got, this is killing me. It's killing me. So I got to say it. Because John Roig says, you know, it's going to be about solar. I said, man, it ain't going to be about solar. It's going to be about other stuff. But does people in the western of the county still want a grocery store? Raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Okay. Because I don't think I would have got elected if I didn't at least say I want to try to get a grocery store. But anyway, and we do need one on the way. And that's the kind of stuff that I feel like sometimes we get that tunnel vision on certain things, but it's so many other things. So I'm asking y'all, before I adjourn the meeting, look through, it's on the website, look through the comprehensive plan, call Mr. Costin, Mrs. Zodi, give some comments. And I want to thank Todd Fortune for the excellent job he did. I'm sorry I kept you guys and ladies and everybody here too late. Please drive home safe. And with that said, I'm entertaining a motion for we adjourn for both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor, stand up, let's go home.
Retreat.